Good evening, it is 6:30 PM, Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. This is the Carney Board of Alderman meeting. We'll call the meeting in order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present and you do have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll just see the consent agenda. Are there any questions or items of discussion under the consent agenda this evening? Do you know, can we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. I have several items of discussion to discuss this evening. And first of all, thank you for, everybody for being here tonight. You know, when I have the opportunity to recognize residents and citizens for hard work to a city of Carney, it's definitely something to be proud of. And with that, we'll start first with Larry and Lanny, correction, sorry. Lanny and Sue Rodden Arboretum, and consider resolution. Decades ago, local resident Lanny Rodden attended a city of Carney Park Treeboard meeting and proposed starting an arboretum in the city's 134 acre Jesse James Park. He was authorized to work with city staff to developing and planning a grid that would not interfere with our park activities. Lanny, a retired airline pilot and former tree nursery owner, laid out a plan to plant trees along a 1.5 mile trail in the park. Since 2010, he has planted over a thousand trees and woody plants in our park. His only assistant has been his wife Sue, who has also bucketed water to the plantings. Most of our plants were donated to the city by Lanny and Sue. The city has assisted to purchase some weed controlled chemicals which he and Sue have applied. In recent years, the city has purchased and paid for some tree spading of larger trees and reimbursed for some tree and shrub invoices. The effort and credit for the project belongs solely to Lanny and Sue Rodden. Lanny and many thousands of hours of labor, donation of plant material, and his sharing of expertise as an arborist makes him a prized asset to the Carney and Holt's community. Lanny has earned statewide recognition for his and Sue's work in Jesse James Park. And while the city has recognized Larry, Lanny, and Sue in the past, we want to make their arboretum officially known as a Lanny and Sue Rodden Arboretum. The resolution has been prepared and will be presented for approval after a brief video showing the board quite literally the fruits of their labor. Mr. Administrator, can you read the prepared resolution?
Thank you. A resolution designating the Lanny and Sue Rodden Arboretum in Jesse James Park and expressing the city's appreciation for their outstanding contributions to the Carney community. Whereas in 2010, Lanny Rodden came before the Carney Park Board with plans for permission to establish an arboretum located in Jesse James Park. And whereas the city did recognize him for contributions of expertise and labor in 2011, after having donated and planted over 300 trees and shrubs, helping beautify and enhance the overall appearance of Jesse James Park. And whereas Lanny and his wife Sue have continued to expand the arboretum over the past decade by donating, planting, nurturing, and pruning over 1,000 trees, woody plants, and perennial plants and flowers. And whereas in 2016, the Midwestern Chapter of the International Society of Arboriculture awarded Lanny an honorary lifetime membership for his outstanding support of arboriculture and the Midwestern Chapter. And whereas in 2018, the Missouri Conservation Department did present Lanny and Sue Rodden with the Missouri Arbor Award of Excellence for improving Missouri communities through stewardship of our community forest, specifically for their achievements in Jesse James Park. And whereas Lanny and Sue Rodden's substantial and selfless gift of thousands of trees and thousands of hours of volunteer labor has culminated in a spectacular botanical collection noted and enjoyed by all visitors to the park, now therefore, the mayor and Board of Aldermen do resolve that the trees and plantings along the walking trails, roadways, and parking lots in Jesse James Park be designated and known as the Lanny and Sue Rodden Arboretum. Evaluate and educate for a greener tomorrow. And does authorize a sign to be placed at the trailhead so designating the said arboretum. Furthermore, in honor of their many contributions, the city does bestow the key to the city, to Lanny and Sue Rodden commemorating their gift to the city of Carney.
Can we entertain a motion to pass the resolution?
I make a motion to pass as read.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Congratulations. I would like to present Lanny and Sue with the official key to the city, a copy of the signed resolution, a picture of the sign that will be installed out at the park, as well as the framed copy of the excellence award from the Missouri Department of Conservation. I'll bring them over to you guys.
And it's photo opportunity if anybody wants to stand and we're going to try to get a posed picture so they can come around here and.
Is it term?
Oh, you can come up. You can come up. You can stay right there, Lanny. Yeah, maybe turn around and that way the photographers. I thought the photographers running back and forth looking at me. Okay. From back here.
So Lanny and Sue.
I'm so in the way right now.
I know. I feel like I'm.
Lanny and Sue Rodden Arboretum in Jesse James Park, anti-molitirism serving the Carney community, 2010 through 2021. It is the first key with our new city logo. So I'd like to present that to you. Thank you for all your work and dedication.
Thank you very much.
We want to go ahead and, we almost need another board member standing on the other side and hold these things. This is the, this is the award of excellence that the Missouri Department of Conservation gave them in 2018. Lanny wanted it down here, but we're going to re-give, we're going to re-give it back to you because I think Sue found a place in the house. This, this is a replica of the sign that we hope to put up. Now, if you don't find the wording just exactly the way you want, I want some, I want feedback on that, okay? But this, this was what's contemplated.
And then here's the original copy of the sign. We really appreciate, appreciate all your work and my favorite is when you come around the soccer field there and you write up, I don't remember the name, but it's called pencil type trees. It's just one of the absolute many places in our heart.
We call that the horseshoe.
The horseshoe? All right. You guys want to say anything?
I'll say thank you to the city of Carney and especially to Jim Eldridge and to all of the men that have taken and put the time in to keep those early plants watered, just to keep everything living and growing. It's kind of helped us because many times it's just with two or three of us and consequently that didn't go very far as far as trying to get all of those trees at one time. I want to take and recognize my wife Sue. She's hanging on to me right here. I've been a little wobbly since I broke my hip unfortunately as I moved there, but she's been my right hand man and she's good on. She's as good on the end of the shovel as she is pretty. I'll take that. I also want to recognize my three sons. I'll recognize my son Derek first because he's helped propagate all these plants when he was living at our house. And he helped immensely in all of that propagation work and getting the seedlings and everything to actually put it out. He didn't know this was in my mind either, he didn't need it, so it's come about. I'll recognize my son John. He's as good on the end of a weed eater and he is a lawnmower and so I've appreciated so much the work that he's done out there. And last of all, my oldest son Doug, who's prayed us all the way through this. But he's been our missionary partner through all of this and I thank you very much for that. And for all of you who are my great friends, Sue's great friend, thank you so much for your coming out tonight and being a part of this.
I just hope somebody will take over for us afterward.
She said we're not going to live forever. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations. Do we get a quick photo?
Does the boy want to speak?
Yeah, any of the family wants to speak?
Derek, do you want to say something?
No, just that Dad has passed on the love of plants and we can walk around out there and we can look at those things and we just enjoy ourselves to death to see them grow and, and maybe people will see just that beauty that's out there. It's special.
I think that, yeah, you know, I mean, there's going to come a day when Mom and Dad are going to be taking us to heaven and, you know, I'll be able to, I mean, I only know one fifth of what, one fifteenth of what my brother knows, but it will be such a special treat. Thank you to the city of Carney. Yeah, I, I just want to thank the city for doing this because there'll come a day when I can walk this trail and I can say, I remember Dad there. I remember Mom there. I remember driving down there with a bucket of water. I remember those things. So it's a, it's a living memorial to my dad.
I'll say something for you.
Thank you, Sue.
We've sort of been behind because of Lanny's hip and John said, well Dad, just tell me where the holes go. I don't want, I'll go plant them for you, but don't tell me about the tree. Don't tell me where you got it. Give me the holes and I'll dig it.
Thank you very much.
Do we have, can we be dismissed?
Thank you very much.
That'll be great.
Congratulations. This is Will. Would anybody in the board like to share any problems or speech?
They would. Lanny, before you get away, there's something I want to say to you.
Yes, sir.
I've known you for a very, very long time.
Yes, sir.
And I see the love that you have for your wife and it spreads over to everyone that sees it. And the love that you have, you put into the plant that you put in out here. And I just want to say, you may have planted a bunch of trees, but what you've really planted is a legacy for us all. And you have done a great job of sharing your life and your love and it's something that will be remembered from generations to generations. And that's an amazing thing because the Bible says that we're supposed to leave a legacy. Lanny, Sue, you've done that and we thank you for that.
That was a request by a citizen and thanks to Donnie Smith and his street department for getting those up so fast for us. So I think we're going to keep them up through the festival. Yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing the crab with you.
Next item under Mayor's remarks is, I am extremely honored to recognize the Rotary Club of Carney for many contributions and consider resolution. Thanks to our Rotary Club for sending the pet waste stations along our trails, both the Fishing River and the Jesse James Park, Mac Quarter Park trails. Debbie, they work. Thanks to our responsible pet owners using the trails, they are utilizing the pet waste stations. I want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank the Rotary members for supporting our trails and other city projects with proclamation. Please read.
Proclamation, recognizing the contributions of the Carney Rotary Club for their service projects to the city of Carney. Whereas the Rotary Club in the past demolished and rebuilt three shelters at Lyons Memorial Park. Whereas Rotary Club, the Carney Rotary Club has constructed concrete pads for park benches in and around our park trails. And whereas Carney Rotary Club has volunteered and provided drinks for kids' fest. And whereas Carney Rotary Club received a grant and provided funds and labor to construct a basketball court in Lyons Memorial Park to provide outdoor recreation to the youth and adults of Carney. And whereas Carney Rotary Club received a grant and provided extra funds and labor to have pet waste stations installed at multiple locations on the various trails of Carney, Missouri. And whereas the Carney Rotary Club has been great stewards of the community, helping many families by building handicapped accessible ramps, helping to move and relocate, move or relocate to different homes and providing cleanup, mowing, removing brush, debris, and grass for residents in need. Now therefore, the mayor and Board of Aldermen do resolve that the city of Carney does commend the Carney Rotary Club for their many contributions and service projects as excellent public servants to the city of Carney.
Congratulations to the Carney Rotary Club. If you'd like to come forward, I'll present you with the original copy. And I will be happy to let the President, Debbie Holt, say if you were, so she chooses to, would you like to speak first?
Oh, of course. It's kind of anticlimactic. I need a bigger audience. I am very proud of our Rotary Club. As small as we are, it's hard right now to get volunteers into service organization. But we see a need last year, and I want to say, social media is not all that. The S M S K K I, or Keeping Carney In Form, you can kind of scroll through there, hear issues and if you look at, at them, as I was told one time by district manager, problems are not problems, they're opportunities. And so there was an opportunity of a lot of dog stuff on the trail and we see that as an opportunity to serve our community. And so I am very proud of our club for the work they did raising funds and for doing the, the labor of putting them all together. So, thank you very much.
Would the other Rotarians in attendance like to be involved in the picture?
Yes, please. Eric, that's you too.
Dan?
I'll take the picture.
You were a vital part.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your continued support of the city.
Thank you, sir.
Mike? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Can we leave now?
Okay, Lanny.
Everybody can leave, but Debbie Holt, yes. Next item for this evening is we do have a proclamation recognizing the KC Scholars Program to be presented to Eric Thompson, who is the KC Scholars Manager of Stackable Credits.
Podium?
I was also asked to issue a proclamation recognizing the KC Scholars Program. Eric Thompson, who is here this evening, would like to give a brief explanation of their program and how it serves the Kansas City area and specifically how it serves the Carney community. Laura, is yours, sir?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Eric Thompson, I am the Stackable Credits Manager. I'll tell you a little bit about what that is because you may not have ever heard of it, but I work for a wonderful organization. The reason I say it's a wonderful organization is because from its founding, from its inception, from the funding, to everything we do, spreading the word about it, it's been about the community. This is a community program. This last cycle, we had 1,600 high school students apply for 200 spots. We're on staff of 20. The only way we're able to do that is because teachers, counselors, parents, community members say, hey, you need to take a look at this. And so this program, as it continues to grow, our goal is to have 15,000 scholarship students by 2027. Right now, we're at 5,100. We plan to have 15,000 students scholarship by 2027. How are we going to do that? Again, by continuing to make the connections we're making here today, to talking with our schools, talking with our counselors, community members, Rotary Club, anybody to get the word out, have your student apply. The only way you're going to have a chance is if you apply. So we have three scholarships. We have our ninth grade scholarship and that's more of a savings match. So that's teaching kids to save and their families to save. We will match dollar for dollar up to $1,000. We have the 11th grade scholarship, that's our big one. It's $10,000 renewable for five years, $15,000. Here's the great part about it. You have to use it in one of our area regional schools. It's not that we don't want our kids to go off, but we do want to keep our talent here. Our goals are to have 75% of our students earn a degree and 80% of those graduates can stay right here in the region. That's why we're supporting them. Also, we have our adult program. Most people don't know about our adult scholarship. You have 12 credits, 24 years old, you can apply for the scholarship. It's $50,000 as well. $10,000 a year if you're full time. If you're part time, which most adults have to go part time, right? It's $5,000 per year, so it's $25,000. That's still a great benefit. That program, and I'll just tell just those of us who are in the room, we have not reached our goal yet. So it's not as competitive as the 11th grade scholarship. So if you know somebody who wants to go back to college, will work with them, have them apply, we want to give this money away, okay? And our Stackable Credits program is our newest program. It's for those students who say, I don't want to go off and, and do a four-year degree. If you're a high school graduate and you want to do construction, if you want to do plumbing, if you want to do certified nursing assistant, we have programs we're working within the community that are providing the training and we're paying the cost if they can't get financial aid, okay? So if you go to our website, www.kcscholar.org, there's an explanation of all of our programs and you'll understand the opportunity. I still feel like we're the best kept secret in town and that's a shame. I'm not satisfied with 5,100 students, okay? I want to get more applications. The more applications we get, the more funding we attract. Kansas City is a very generous community. Most of our funding comes from coffee, but we've raised $6.7 million from citizens in the six county area in just five years. So that's our story. There's a lot more to it, obviously, but again, because of you all, Clay County is one of our six counties we serve. You all are an integral part of what makes this program work. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll have our administrator read the proclamation and then I'll like to present it to you, please.
KC Scholars celebrates five years of paving, paving paths to possible proclamation. Whereas KC Scholars, Inc. was established in 2016 and serves a six county by state region. And whereas KC Scholars provides low and modest income students and returning adult learners with an opportunity to complete a post-secondary credential and/or degree. And whereas KC Scholars makes its annual awards to ninth and 11th graders to returning adult learners with some college, no, no degree. And whereas KC Scholars has made 5,261 scholarship awards in its five years, first five years of operation, including 21 scholarships awarded to Carney High School students. And whereas KC Scholars honors all post-secondary pathways, supporting certificates, credentials, associates, and/or bachelor's degree completion. And whereas scholars are diverse across many factors, 81% are individuals of color with six counties and from 103 unique high schools, public, private, and charter. 73% are in the first family to complete college and. and 448 scholars have at least one other family member also in the program. And whereas KC Scholars can increase the Kansas City region's post-secondary attainment rate by 10% and the region's black and Hispanic post-secondary attainment rate by 26% by 2027. And whereas KC Scholars connects its scholars to regional employers to achieve its goal of 80% of scholar graduates in the Kansas City region to live and work. And whereas KC Scholars has nearly 300 external donors that make it possible to award more scholarships each year. And whereas this year, September 28th, 2021, KC Scholars celebrates five years of paving paths to possible. This is five years of creating life-changing opportunity for years of positively transforming the region's workforce and economy. Now therefore, I, Randy Poe, Mayor of the city of Kearney, hereby proclaim September 28th, 2021 to be KC Scholars Day in celebration of their five-year anniversary and encourage our citizens to become aware of the KC Scholars 501(c)(3) program and to support them in achieving their goal of supporting an additional 10,000 scholars in the next five years, resulting in 15,000 homegrown racially, ethnically, ethnically, and generationally diverse scholars that remain in the region to live and work by 2027. Signed this day, uh...
Yeah, I'm not going to get a picture of you guys. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Get closer there. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Would you email the copy?
I will. Give me your card, and I'll email it to your phone or something.
You know, I started during the pandemic. I don't have any business cards.
I got your email.
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item I'd like to discuss under Mayor's remarks this evening is I had a citizen request, which that request from the citizen is enclosed in the agenda item. For the city of Kearney to consider modifying our regulation to permit, uh, the ownership of a limited number of chickens in residential areas. I know this is done in a number of Johnson County, Kansas communities, some of our surrounding and peer communities. And I do think it's a reasonable request that we should consider as a board. Anybody on the board have any comments to make on that request from the citizens?
I do.
Okay.
I think it's something that we need to look at, but I think before we just do a blanket, hey, we can have chickens. We need to, uh, just like the City of Liberty, depending on the size of the yard, how far you are from the house, or the chicken coops and those type of things. Yes, that they're asking not to have roosters, but if you have a subdivision where there's a lot of dogs, well, the dogs are going to be barking like crazy after the chickens. So there's some things that we're going to have to look at. I think that some chickens could fit in town in certain places, but I'm not sure that they could fit everywhere. That's something I want to look at.
Any other items of discussion on the topic from the board?
I'll just add that, um, the community that I work for, my full-time job, has a, uh, chicken ordinance, I guess. I've been there for almost 11 months, and I will tell you without a doubt, I've had no complaints. But I will say there are ordinance does not allow roosters. It only allows chickens. Chickens or hens, I guess, uh, are typically quieter. And, uh, from my experience, the, the roosters are the ones that cause nuisance complaints because of noise. And so, uh, we've, we've had a, a ordinance there that allows chickens, it allows ducks, um, does not allow livestock, but it does allow, uh, for, uh, it does allow for pot-bellied pigs. And there's a goat, uh, like a feining goat. I don't know what a feining goat is, but anyway. So in, in my almost 11 months there, I've had no complaints involving chickens, or ducks, or feining goats, or anything like that. So, uh, I think it's something that we probably need to look into, so.
To finish you up, I just...
All right, I got your hands.
Um, the only thing that I would also like to add is that my concern when I first saw this, and I'm going to go on record and say I'm not against chickens, and I, I'm not against having chickens in town, but my concern was the enforcement of the regulation and not having, we're, we're short-staffed in the police department. However, if we look at, you know, the youth tax and we look at bringing in an animal control officer, I think that will make it a lot easier for us to, to be able to enforce the regulation as we write it, so.
That's a very good, uh, all of them are good points, and appreciate the board's input. Uh, I, I do agree, you know, this, when the youth tax is, is passed in support of animal control officer position is a, is a must. Chairman Spencer, I don't want to leave you out. Did you have anything to share?
I think they've pretty well covered exactly what I was thinking, that, um, it is a possibility. It does need some regulations that go along with it.
Absolutely. I will have staff get back in contact with the resident that made this request and, and ask that staff work with the resident on some considerations from the board at a future date.
I would like to say a caveat that a lot of neighborhoods have an HOA, and I should have said this, that even if we agree that they could have chickens, their neighborhood still may not allow any poultry of any nature, or ducks, or feining goats, or pot-bellied pigs. You know, any...
Absolutely. Uh, next item, uh, I want to discuss under Mayor's remarks this evening is I want to make sure everybody is aware that, uh, I've been contacted by the Kearney Chamber of Commerce, Executive Director, Speaker, and, uh, received a surprising email from her, and she announced that the city of Kearney is being considered for the first Business Excellence Award. It's an honor for the chamber to recognize the city for this manner. We may or may not win, but nonetheless, congratulations to the city, all the hard work. I believe they specifically mentioned, uh, our upgrade in the revitalization of our Lyons Park and, um, getting the amphitheater going back this summer. So, uh, we receive those recognitions, uh, from, uh, the work of, by the Parks Department. So I wanted to make sure that, that the board and our community is aware of, of us being nominated for that award. That concludes my Mayor's remarks, and we'll move on to the administrator's report.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much. I have invited Greg Kendall to appear. The water plant has developed a, a water seal leak that, that was requiring us to retain decker construction and, um, to help us with the repair. While this pipe was not contemplated to replace, we'd like to proceed with bidding the pipe gallery replacement project that was designed by Lamp, Rhine-Nierson, last year, but put on hold during the COVID pandemic. In addition, in addition to the piping improvements, we are working with Lamp Rhine-Nierson on a contract proposal to look at expanding the city's ground storage at the water plant. While our demands regularly exceed treatment capacities based on our current operational staffing, the plant's high-service pumps make this location the logical place to store and distribute water. And Lamp would prepare a report determining the appropriate size of the tank expansion. We currently have a 1 million gallon capacity there. And he, we, we also have other issues when we, uh, this arch through this water with Kansas City water that needs to be evaluated. And I'd like to, Greg, to come up briefly and explain maybe the, the piping project and, uh, a little bit about, uh, what your report would entail for the, uh, for the groundwater storage capacities. And, um, if you could just, just briefly summarize those projects. Yes, sir.
Okay, the, the rehabilitation project is, uh, the filter face piping in the water plant, and you have four filters. We split that bid into two pieces. It'll be a base bid, we'll do one side, and an alternate bid, we'll do the other side. We'll be replacing some pipe sections, painting pipe, replacing the washwater troughs, replacing quite a few of the valves and operators. And that will go to Drexel tomorrow. And we'll have roughly a 30-day advertisement period and see how those bids come in. The, uh, the project, the new project that we're looking at, as Jim mentioned, it's, it's primarily looking at storage at the water plant, increasing the storage there, also taking a, a long-term look at your distribution system and seeing what the needs will be as, as far as whether Kansas City, can get all the water that you're going to need up into the city with the current configuration, or whether you might need a pump station at some point in the future. Also look at your final disinfectant and, and get to the point where you're using either chloramines system-wide or free chlorine system-wide. We've, we've touched on that before, and, uh, we think it's time to, to make a choice and, and make the changes that will be needed to be able to do that. We, we've set this up, the contract is from preliminary engineering all the way through construction, which we anticipate is going to be about a 22-month period. And, uh, we'll, we'll complete one phase and get approval on that before we go into another phase. We, we made some assumptions about how we think the study is going to turn out and, and what we think we're going to end up doing, and, and made the pricing based on that. So once we complete the engineering phase, we confirm that, or we end up doing things a little bit different, we'll, we'll make some adjustments in, in schedule and, and fees as we need to. In, in a nutshell.
Thank you, Greg. I did expect you to attend by Zoom, and I'm sorry, I, because I knew you were...
You, you mentioned Zoom, but I thought this is a good one to come up and then get my face in front of the board.
Well, that's...
Thanks for being here, Greg. I, I would like to add to that, and if Donnie Smith would like to say anything, this would be a good time to allow him to, but I, I asked Donnie a couple of months ago if there was one item that causes him to lose sleep at night, uh, with his position being our, our Director of Streets and Utilities and, and everything. And he, he's told me water storage is, is a big concern. As a community continues to grow, not only residential but commercial, you know, we haven't invested in water storage for, for quite some time. So, uh, I'm really interested in, in seeing your report, and, uh, hopefully, Donnie, we can cure that concern for you.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll be working closely with Donnie as, as we go through it and, and staff and make sure they buy into, to everything that, that, uh, that we come up with and, and are comfortable with it, too. They'll, they'll have to operate whatever, whatever gets put in.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, I, I do want, uh, my next item is to report that we have received $1,95,000, a little bit change, for the first fiscal recovery funds that are, that have been approved by the American Rescue Plan Act. And I do want to point out that Item D of the, of the, uh, enabling legislation says to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So if you want to guess where I would be pointing your guys' ideas towards that in free water, and, well, and possibly even some sewer issues, too. So, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've enclosed additional information on our fund to help explain that. Question-answer, document, it's 36 pages long. It, uh, I believe you can keep that as a reference if you want to, or, uh, it's on the Missouri Municipalite's website. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move on to public requests and petitions, we did receive a question online regarding an item under Mayor's remarks, specifically the chickens. And, uh, Resident Sean Warth, I want to know if she was going to be open up for other citizens' input and ideas. Most definitely. If, if, you know, when the, the board would vote on the item, we would most definitely allow an opportunity for any resident to voice their opinion one way or another. Obviously, there's no action on an official change of ordinance this evening. We'll move on to public requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, a citizen petition was received by, from a resident seeking a sidewalk extension from Westwood Village. A desire for project funding was not available last year when constructing the Dogwood Sidewalk. That contractor, Mega Industries, proposed a change order for $120,000 to do that piece of work. We would suggest as staff to, that the project receive priority at the November 2nd use tax funding proposal, which we do plan to have a list of sidewalk improvements that would be funded by the use tax.
That's one of many, uh, pathway sidewalk projects that, uh, need some attention in our community to where the last several years we've made a, a really good investment and improvement, but not only, uh, updating and correcting, uh, old deteriorating sidewalks, we've added new sidewalks in the community. And I, you know, not to speak for the board, but we hear your concern. I hear your concern, and, uh, hopefully, we can get support on the use tax and make that priority on the pathway piece of that.
And Mr. Mayor, we had, uh, have Terry Peterson here, the owner of Red Gate Disposal, that would like to express his intent to bid on solid waste collection service, Gurbicide, I mean, Gurbicide Recycling, I think. And if you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself, I think we all know Red Gate by seeing your own trucks, and, uh, you've been in business for quite, quite some time as our...
Thank you very much. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Terry Peterson. I own and operate Red Gate Disposal. At least my wife lets me think I do. I just wanted to add something real quick. I go to a lot of city meetings all over this immediate area, and I'm quite impressed with your community. You all have a lot to be proud of. I was witnessing the care and concerns of the citizens in your community, and to get that type of response out of citizens to come and support your ideas and your methods, uh, you must be having it, you really got it going on, whatever you have.
That was all Lanny Roth.
Right, well, I think that's a statement to your community in general. Reason I'm here this evening, again, I run a, a trash business, and we have a lot of interest in the city here. We have been in business, uh, a number of years. We've been servicing a lot of the commercial properties here in town. I just, again, wanted to introduce ourselves. I told the mayor I'd be very brief. That's hard for me to do, by the way. But, uh, I just wanted to introduce us and let you know that we have a genuine interest in servicing your community as far as the trash and other amenities to go along with the trash. If any of you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, but I told the mayor I'd be brief, so I'm going to be brief.
Thank you very much for, for being here and introducing yourself to myself and the board, and citizens of Kearney. We definitely have your contact information, and you will definitely be notified of the next bidding opportunity.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, board. Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings this evening, no full business to discuss. We do have an item under new business this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have enclosed in AA, in the, in the agenda packet, a, um, a proposed ordinance that is, that would all... We have enclosed an AA in the agenda packet, a proposed ordinance that is, that would alter the ward slightly. We received our Census Bureau information just what the middle of this month. And David took right into it, and we've got the blocks figured out, and we laid it out, or he laid it all out. And what we find is, is that presently Ward 1 is 5,447 persons. Ward 2 is 4,957 residents, and that's all people. Well, you don't count voters age. This is how it's done in Missouri. And so there's a 9.4% deviation, small enough to actually leave the boundaries in place according to court interpretations that say a 10% deviation is acceptable. However, a simple boundary adjustment that would return to the state highways for ward boundaries does make sense. Ward 1 would, being west of 33 and north of 92, and Ward 2 being south of 92 and east of 33. The enclose map shows this change, which puts Carney Manor and South Brook and some other subdivisions, Martin Place, back into the Ward 2, as was the 1980 boundaries of the ward. This would shift the wards to 5,112 for Ward 1, 5,292 for Ward 2. That's a 3.4% deviation. However, David's memo that's enclosed calculates the specific occupancy that were issued just this last year, and the ward populations using Carney's 2.6 persons per household would be 5,304 for Ward 1, 5,375 for Ward 2, making us 1.4 deviation today. That proposed ordinance has been prepared. I think we're very early in the game. This does not have to be read and passed this evening, but we certainly think it's a logical enough thing that the Board can act very quickly if they see the same things that we do.
Any questions? Any items of discussion on this from the Board?
About time I get my three blocks back.
Just means more hours to watch.
That's true.
Give it up for your chief. There are no questions or items of discussion from the Board. Do we want to entertain a motion to pass the proposed ordinance?
I make a motion to pass the proposed ordinance.
And I'll second it.
On the first reading.
On the first reading. Read it by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 105, establishing new ward boundaries.
Still moved. I'm seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 105, establishing new ward boundaries.
Make a motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Pull the Board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Will you have an executive session of this evening? In accordance with RSMO 610-021, the Board may go into closed session during this meeting to discuss matters of litigation, legal actions provided under Section 610-021 Subsection 1, and real estate under Section 610-021 Subsection 2. Can we consider a motion to go into executive session this evening?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pull the Board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
We enter executive session at 7:24. Once we conclude executive session, we'll return to our regular public meeting for all room discussion and then adjournments.
Take our chamber to do a really good job of that.
All night long, there's chairs been going down and down and down. And I went in there, I come back now, it's all the way down.
Yeah.
Now I'm down on the floor.
All right, we adjourned our executive session at 7:57. We'll move on to the next item of business for my discussion. Alderman.
I just want to add my congratulations to everyone we recognize tonight. It's fantastic to see our community so involved in things that are going on. And the Roddins have done, I've been around and seen what they've done for a long time. I was excited to see them tonight. So just want to say congratulations to everybody we recognize tonight.
Alderman Lehman?
I've got two things tonight. We obviously had in our packet the correspondence from Mrs. Alexander on the fireworks. And so just wanted to see where, because it kind of was talked about and then wasn't. So, yeah, from Debbie Alexander. So didn't know where we were at on that, if anything had more had been done on that. But the other thing I wanted to bring up was, and I know there's some differing opinions even on this board, but I wanted to see if we could get staff to do some research on our breed-specific dog ban. I think we have a dangerous or vicious dog ordinance. We've had a vicious dog ordinance even when I worked here. And to have a specific breed dog ban. I talked to a friend of mine who's on the city council in Liberty. They've done away with their specific breed dog ban. And he said- And he says that they've had no problems, uh, they also have a vicious dog ordinance. And so, uh, I think so much of vicious or dangerous dogs are how they're raised. And, and I think so much of that is, uh, if they're raised, uh, to, to be compassionate. There, there's really no research that shows that a specific breed is more vicious than another breed. If they're, if they're trained right, if they're raised right. I have, I have a niece that has two full-grown Doberman Pinschers. And these dogs look mean, they will bark at you, but the only thing they're gonna do is lick you to death. And, and so, uh, I think it's something that, that we need to look at. There's, there's a lot of communities that are around us that have gotten away from the speci- specific breed dog ban. And I, I really would like to see, uh, staff do some research about, uh, the liability. If there is a liability, if we do away with a specific dog breed ban. I don't, I don't see the liability if we have a vicious dog ordinance. And, uh, again, the community that I work at full-time had a specific breed dog ban. We also have a vicious dog ordinance. And, uh, we got rid of our specific breed dog ban and didn't have any issues. So, um, I'd like to see some more research and, and, uh, maybe something brought up to, uh, do away with the, the specific breed dog ban, so.
Uh, first, if I could touch on, uh, the, the first item, uh, from Ms. Alexander regarding the fireworks. Guess I'm just looking for some direction from you. Are, are you asking to make a motion on a specific recommendation? Or, um, you know, that, that was, uh, citizen did, did request and address the board, we have asked, hold up the email or two since then. I don't believe that there's been any formal feedback or requests from anybody on the board, uh, to recommend a specific motion.
I, I do think it's something that we look at, we need to look at. You know, I, I live in, in a neighborhood that likes to celebrate July. And for two days, actually probably closer to two weeks. I'm picking remnants of aerial shells, um, either out of my pool or out of my yard. And, and so, and I can tell you for a fact that the remnants of an aerial shell when they land in chlorinated water will do many wondrous things to, to keep a pool, uh, in, in check. So, um, I've, I've literally had to, uh, take, uh, nets and to scoop them out, uh, so.
So, do, do you have a specific recommendation or request? That is what I'm trying to get at, or when you say look at, um, what's your specific recommendation?
I would like to see staff research what other communities are doing as far as their regulations on ordn- on fireworks. What does that be? I know we already currently don't allow bottle rockets. So they're being shot, I can guarantee that, cause I found remnants of those. But, but yet we still allow the, the, I call them the big bottle rockets, uh, that are on a stick that you can stick it in the ground and light it and it'll take off from the ground. We still allow those. And, and so, um, you know, some of the, the aerial, uh, displays, yeah, they're pretty. But these are, these are commercial-grade fireworks. They don't belong in a densely populated residential neighborhood, so.
Think a request to ask staff to, uh, research what our, our peer, other communities are, are doing and how it relates to our ordinances is a, a task that they should definitely be able to take for you. And then on the comment on, uh, you, the item of the, uh, our ordinance that does have the breed-specific ban. That, that has been a topic that we've had discussion on as a board, uh, I think last, uh, at least twice, uh, since I've been mayor. And, uh, there's, there's been no specific recommendation from the board on, on, uh, there's, there's been no motion brought forward to the board to, to physically, you know, vote on that item. I know it's been requested, uh, I know myself and the rest of the board have been contacted multiple times on residents, firm residents, um, asking for the, the, the breed-specific ban to be changed. Uh, you are accurate, we do have what I feel is a very good dangerous dog ordinance for the city of Carney. So, once again there, I'm, I'm just asking what, what's, what's your ask there? Are you asking us to do some additional research and, and discuss it at a future meeting? Or, or what are you, what's your expectation?
I, I think I would, I would like to see what other communities are, have done. You know, like I said, Liberty I know had one, it's gone now. You know, what's, what's Smithville doing? What's, what's, you know, uh, and just some really good research, uh, as far as how they've gotten rid of their, their specific breed dog bans and, and the problems that they've had since then. And, and ultimately, yeah, I, I, I think it probably is something that, uh, needs to come up to a vote, one way or the other. So, um, but I don't know that next two weeks from now is, is, you know, something that we need to have an ordinance one way or the other. But eventually, yes, I would, I would like to see an ordinance, uh, brought to the, to board for a vote. And whether it passes or fails, whichever way it's written, um, that's, at least we're on record for that, so.
The, the breed-specific ordinance was adopted as an ordinance modeled after, with the city of Independence adopted theirs, which they have not repealed theirs as far as I know.
That's correct.
And, uh, they are, uh, the proponents of, of repealing, uh, breed specifics are working their way around our metro area, persuading people to do that. The city of Liberty, uh, put it up for the vote of the people to, to repeal that. And, uh, I think they simply repealed their, I don't know for sure if they replaced it. But, uh, any kind of regulations that we adopt are going to require an animal control officer to, to do that. We have no animal control officer.
I agree.
We have gotten by without that. And so, I would recommend whatever considerations you all take. You certainly recognize that we have no, uh, no person that is dedicated for animal control at all. And, uh, I would think same as fire regulations. If we adopt more regulations, that requires more enforcement. And, uh, we're not gonna go up to that person's house and sort through his fireworks and decide whether it's commercial or not commercial. I think what, what the issue is for most communities are is no, no fireworks or fireworks. And that can be enforced a, a whole lot more readily. And I believe that's how Liberty does do it. You know, or they've limbed it down to even one day. But those kinds of things, uh, I, I always worry about how well an ordinance is written. Doesn't make an ordinance enforce forcible. What we need to do is, is recognize the difficulty of enforcing some of these things. And, uh, same way with breed-specific, uh, or a dangerous dog ordinance is we will need to, uh, probably have, have an animal control officer at some point, if we tied to that.
Yes, I don't understand the connection of our current ordinance to breed specific to require an animal control officer to where we have it now.
If we, um-
Our, our ability to-
Enforce-
Our current ordinance.
When I was, when I worked-
That, that wouldn't change, is that you, right, you're-
I worked for the city prior, we didn't have an animal control officer. And we didn't have a specific breed ban then. So, then we went and, went and adopted a more restrictive ban. We still don't have a animal control officer. And, and ultimately, if we go back to the vicious dog ordinance away from the speci- specific breed dog ban.
We shouldn't have one.
I see no difference.
Okay.
Cause we didn't have one, we don't have one. Whether we do or not in the future is, is irrelevant because we didn't initially, don't now. So, I don't see where going back to a vicious dog ordinance all of a sudden means that- and I'm not against having an animal control officer, believe me.
Yeah, I, I'm not either, I, I was just having a hard time making that ca- I, I just want to make sure understood your request and what else that our administrator, the fact that, i- i- in my eyes, if the board would have the desire to put to the vote and the ban, or current ban ordinance would be, would be repealed, then I would think that would be deregulation instead of more regulation. I was trying to make that agreement.
Maybe that's true. I guess what I'm saying to you is that we're twice as big as what we were, uh, over twice as big what we were, uh, you know, grown quite dramatically. And our animal control, uh, uh, needs are far more. And I do believe that, uh-
Agreed.
That, uh, I believe that if we remove the specific breed ban, we will have more vicious dogs in our community. Because we have, because of that, that's, that's my personal belief. So, uh, that's where I'd be coming from, is that, is that, uh, you know, having a law that bans it. Uh, you, you might say, well, I know somebody who has one. Well, we don't. And if we do find out, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna ask them to remove the dog from, from the city limits. That, that happens regularly every day, it's a normal thing. If, if I find out there's a, there's an address, I turn to the police department, we act on it. If we start having, uh, if we lift the lid on that, uh, I, I fear for, uh, for having the possibility of more vicious dogs. The culture with pit bulls is, is that they're proud to have their dog be vicious. I've seen that. There's a show on TV that, that brags about, uh, about, uh, pit bulls. And, and it's, it's, it's more about, you know, a, a tough dog than it is, that's, that's my point of view anyway. So, uh, I, I, I think the pit ban, the, the ban has, has worked to re- remove, uh, a breed that I find, you know, I think there are, there are quite a bit of evidence, or used to be evidence, uh, that they, they attack it all the time. But, um, I'm still on the, I still believe it's appropriate ban, so. But that's, that's my, it's only, uh, an administrator will do whatever he wants.
Anything else to see? Alderman Holt?
I don't fully share David's approach on things, but that's okay. I mean, it needs to be brought up and voted on. But, um, as far as fireworks go, we did talk about, um, one of the things that Ms. Alexander wanted was, was for people to be more informed. And about getting out the rules of the Fourth of July fireworks and stuff to the public, uh, weeks in advance so that everybody knows. I think that's very important, I think that's something that we, that we-
That's something we agreed to-
Really need to do.
Absolutely.
Beginning and ending date.
Yeah, so that everybody knows, hey, when you can chew, when you can't, and what your responsibility of cleaning up is and, and, and things like that. So, um, that is something that I do think that we need to make a, a bigger effort in, in trying to do. But other than that, um, I was asked the other day, and I didn't really have the answer, and I'm on the parks board. Um, they asked if the spray pad was going to close after Labor Day. And it could still be pretty warm after Labor Day. Asked if we could keep the spray pad open, um, I don't know how long, but keep it open after Labor Day because it could still get, get hot, so.
We've, we've shut it down as of today.
I know you did.
We winterized it and, uh, and taken, taken those actions today.
I know you did.
And, uh, that was, uh, that was a rule that was, uh, posted on the board. And it is a very customary thing to do, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day is, is across the nation.
I know.
The, uh, the appointed times. And to have it open, I can tell you, the thing about the, the pool, or the, the spray pad, if one child is out there activating it, it runs for that one child the same amount of water as it would run for ten. And what I would say to you is I don't think it's an efficient or effective way, uh, to entertain one or two ch- children that are, that are using it during the week when they should be in school. Or if they're preschoolers, uh, you know, well, that's just, you know, that's the normal, that's the American tradition is to shut down the pools, uh, between those dates. And, uh, well, we, we put those on, on the board thinking that that was the way it was going to be. That's, I'm just telling you.
You're gonna, we're gonna get some, some, uh, feedback, whatever you call it on that, let me know.
Do you not agree that, uh, we should follow kind of the customary procedure of having it between those two dates?
No. That's okay. I think it's something that, that, you gotta look at the weather. I mean, if it's gonna be, you know, eighty-five, ninety degrees on the weekends, don't you think that it still should be used? I mean, you know, so, I mean, it's just something that'll play by year. I don't know that it's a hard set date.
Like I say, that has been, well, how I grew up in this community even, we had our pools-
We know, times change.
I don't know that they have. I think, I think the city-
Not in your mind.
City, 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 they shut down their pools on Labor Day. So, I don't, I don't think we're inconsistent at all with, with the, the norms.
I'm just telling.
It, it was, it was explained to me, um, I know, I know, another parks board member had contacted the parks department with a similar question, uh, and that was brought to my attention. And park staff took the recommendation of not only the manufacturer, but the parks consultant, Steve Casey of the project, to shut down Labor Day. Manufacturers are from Oklahoma or Texas today, and it was winterized and per the rules of the park that was approved by the park board, it was winterized today. Does that mean that that's how it has to be forever? Absolutely not. I've already asked Eric and Ryan to talk with the manufacturer and our consultant to see if there's any options for anything different next year. I, I will tell you that I think they're extremely nervous about that, just because you never know with the weather and they don't want to damage any equipment.
Sure.
So, I have, I mentioned all that, Dan too, I've heard the same concern. And that's the, the feedback, uh, that I've received from staff.
Gotcha. That's it.
Alderman Sitzer?
I just want to say how impressed I was with, um, Lanny and Sue. And huge kudos again for their hard work, effort and dedication to Jesse James Park. It's a great thing. So, and speaking of Jesse James, everyone mark your calendars, weeks, minutes.
Hard to believe.
Wasn't it the Saturday demolition derby?
Dance is this coming weekend.
Dance this week?
Yeah.
I thought the demolition derby was eleven.
I think so.
Is it?
Yeah.
This weekend.
It's, uh, Lanny and Sue, it's bulls like them, it's kind of a dying breed in, in our country anymore. There's, you know, um, any volunteer organization- There's, you know, any volunteer organization is scraping for volunteers. Any fraternal organization is scraping for members. Yes, I appreciate the board's support and staff's support on recognizing everybody this evening, but specifically a special appreciation for Lanny and Sue. They definitely made a difference in our community that will be appreciated for many years to come. There are no other items under order of discussion. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, adjourn, have a good evening, thank you.